Time for the pledge. Roll call.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
President.
Councilmember Brian Erdy Alice.
Here.
Doug Shasso.
Here.
John Kaper.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lynn Deal.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
I'm here. I can't hear him, but I'm here.
Welcome back.
Thank you, thank you.
First item on the agenda is public comments or audience participation for items not on the agenda. If there anybody wish to address council for items not on our agenda this evening?
Nobody in this Zoom meeting either.
Nope. Okay. Seeing none. Next is approval of the minutes from our January 19th, 2021 city council regular meeting. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. A draft copy of the January 19th minutes were placed in your packets and are presented for your approval by resolution.
So everybody had an opportunity to review those minutes. If there's no changes or corrections, I would entertain a motion for resolution to approve.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to approve the minutes of last meeting.
Second. Have a resolution by Kevin Lindell and a second by Clint Anderson. All in favor, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next item is recognition of the business of the month for February. Sarah Crossley.
Hi, good evening. So I'm really excited. For this month, the business of the month is PAWS, Second Chance Rescue and Thrift Store. They've been a business in our communities since 2017, and their cause behind their business is really great. They raise funds through their thrift store to rescue animals and find them a permanent home, which is such an amazing cause to work towards. And so with that, I'm happy to invite Debbie up here. She's the owner of PAWS, Second Chance Rescue and Thrift Store, and congratulate her on Business of the Month for February.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
You're welcome.
They're so, so excited about getting this next door. So this is hopefully will help us boost our business a little bit more, get some more revenues in. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. Next item is a presentation on bids for a heavy-duty work cart for the cemetery. Mr. Underwood.
Good evening, council. As it states, I'm here tonight seeking approval to purchase a heavy-duty work cart to be utilized for a full burial interment at the cemetery. Five years back, we altered our operations for aesthetic reasons, liability reasons, damage for stones, to rely less on dump trucks to remove the dirt and to bring it in and to work more towards carts. The cart we had was a light-duty cart, and we've made it work, but the success in those operations, I believe, has, you know, been outstanding over the last four or five years. So that being said, heading into 2021, we had 40,000 budgeted for the purchase of a heavy-duty cart, which will be more in line with the payloads we'll be looking to carry. We will still utilize the light-duty cart extending its life with this purchase, more for cremations, debris burial, stuff along those lines. We went out to bid on the city website December 17th of 2020, held a bid opening January 15th, 2021, and received two bids. Staff is requesting council approval to accept the bid from L.L. Johnson in the amount of $39,041.38 for the purchase of the heavy-duty work cart previously mentioned.
Love the pictures. I love the pictures. Yeah, that's great. I like that really.
Yeah, that was a nice ask from John at the last meeting, and so we're starting to incorporate those into the packets. So appreciate you guys putting those in.
So you're gonna keep and utilize the light-duty cart that you're now replacing?
No, this is actually a new purchase, and it'll be beneficial, you know, anytime we're doing a burial to have the one cart we have out of service essentially. People waiting for that. So it'll increase efficiency and stuff like that.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Underwood? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution to accept the bid from L.L. Johnson in the amount of $39,041.38 for a heavy-duty work cart.
Second. Have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, everybody.
And, Your Honor, he's gonna kill me, but I just wanna honor Matt a little bit and recognize him. He's our manager of the year this year for the city, and we were able to recognize him at the all-city meeting. So since he's here, I'm just gonna say congratulations and embarrass him a little bit. Matt does a really great job, and we're excited to honor him with that this year, so.
Congrats. I've heard a lot of positive things about the golf course. You've done a pretty good job of turning that in the right direction as well.
Well, I do appreciate, I do appreciate it, but, you know, it's, it's the guys I work with on a daily basis. I look at it this way. They're the nuts and bolts. They're the engine of the operation. I'm just the janky label we slap on the side of the machine. If you wanna know the truth, I work with nine individuals, all who are extremely proud, hard workers, who have really bought in and honestly feel themselves on a daily basis for what I ask them to do, knowing that it's gonna be my ugly mug sitting up here, getting recognized for something that really is about the guys. So I do appreciate it, but I'll also, more along the lines, pass this on to them, because I think it's more about the guys I work with rather than me.
It takes a good team leader, though.
That it does.
Yep.
And that's exactly why it's manager of the year.
Yes.
Again, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Next is a presentation on bids for the West Platte Avenue water line project. Second.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight, I'm looking for approval to start working on a pretty substantial project. It's going to be, of course, West Platte Avenue, which is also a state highway, so we will be working with CDOT. They were gracious enough to grant us enough time to get in there and get this water main replaced before they do their resurfacing project that they've been kinda working on just outside of town and all around town. So they held out coming through town until we could get this old infrastructure replaced. Right now, we've got eight-inch, 10-inch, four-inch old sandcast pipe that is not reliable in any way. We've had multiple breaks on it, and when they break, they're usually pretty substantial breaks. So we are thankful that we're able to get in there and get that replaced. We are going to be replacing from Lane Street all the way to Main Street. The majority of it is actually going to be upsized from a oversized 10-inch cast to a 12-inch C900 PVC pipe, and that will be going from West Street down all the way to Enzine, and then from West Street back to Lane Street. We're just gonna be replacing that with eight-inch C900. And then, of course, we're doing all of the laterals coming from all the side streets as we go, because, you know, over the years, we've been replacing mains on those side streets, but we could never go out into the state highway without special permitting and permissions. So a lot of those are still old four-inch cast pipe going out from the edge of the road out into the main in Platte Avenue. So we're gonna get those all fixed and have them sized appropriately. And so that's kind of a history of the project. So, an invitation was placed on the city's website on December 21st, 2020, and made available at City Hall. A mandatory pre-bid was held on January 5th. One addendum was issued with the inclusion of potential concrete removal, and what that consists of, I've got that included. That is unfortunately a good portion of Platte Avenue that we have seen. There is a layer of concrete underneath the crown of, I don't know how much of it, we're just guessing most of it. It goes kinda from both the inside lanes, eastbound and westbound, and it's about anywhere from six to eight inches thick. And so we're hoping we can avoid that, and so the regular price of the bid is without having to deal with a good portion of that, except at, of course, intersections where we have crossings, we'll have to deal with it. But we're hoping we can avoid it with the alignment that we're gonna put the main in. But if we encounter it, have to deal with it for most of the way, I've included that as an addition. So then the contractors pay accordingly for additional work they may have to do. So bids were due on January 15th, and we did have two companies bid on it. One of them was Jeff Spacco Service, and the other one was Darren Neve Excavating. And we had put this into two different projects, because we have kind of a short window that we have to get in there and get this main replaced to try and work with CDOT. So we've kind of agreed with them and come to kind of a conclusion to try. We've got the month of March to get this completed. So we're hoping to get everything started March 1st and be out of there by March 31st. And they're supposed to be coming in and paving the patch that we make and then resurfacing right after that. So they're coming in on our heels. And so we just wanna get in and out. And so we had done this in case we had to have two contractors. Well, we went ahead and decided to award this to one contractor, and it was Darren Neve Excavating. And the biggest reason, we've been working with Darren for a long time. He used to work with Ransum Boone Excavating years ago, and he started his own business, and we've done several main replacements with him, including Sherman Street replacement, which was a very substantial replacement. And it, other than a little Mother Nature stepping in, one day, we actually, it was very smooth. We got the project done in a timely manner, and didn't have any other issues other than a slight flooding of our trench, which included an additional day of work on both our part and our contractor's part. But he was very gracious of helping with that and didn't even wanna charge us for it. I kinda made him at least charge us for part of it, because it wasn't his problem, it wasn't his fault that the situation happened. So, but we've worked with him on that. We've done several more side street replacements. He also did a sewer main installation, a brand-new main, going out to the industrial park to kind of include that, the farm area, so we can actually provide sewer service to that area. So he did that last year, and he did a very good job on that as well. And then the other reason we decided to award it to him is he actually presented with his bid package a very aggressive schedule that he can adhere to, that basically gets the entire project done within that scope. And actually, according to his schedule, would be done by the, let me make sure I say the right date here. Yeah, on the 24th of March. So we've kinda, we've been working with him now to kind of finalize a schedule that we're going to hand out to all of the affected people along that corridor, so then everyone's very well aware of what we're doing. We wanna make sure we have good public relations and keep everyone in the loop. But his schedule was very, very aggressive, and it seemed to work very well. And after having a conversation with him, he also informed us that he has taken measures to acquire additional crews, additional equipment, dump trucks, because unfortunately, since this is in the state highway, they require a certain kind of backfill whenever we compact our trench. And so most of the native material that we pull out will have to be hauled off and new material hauled in. And so he's already acquired all those and has them ready to go if he was awarded the project. So he did all of his homework, and with our history with him, I feel very confident that he is the right choice for the job. And so staff is requesting council approval to accept the bid from Darren Neve Excavating to complete the 2021 West Platte Avenue Water Projects A and B in an amount not to exceed $558,108.75. And again, that includes that additional, that potential concrete that I put in there with the inclusion of the addendum number one cost in case additional work is encountered. Are there any questions?
So when you do this, or you don't have to block off Platte Avenue then?
Yes.
Between main and everything like that?
We're gonna, we're gonna do it in sections. So we're gonna be going block and intersection at a time. So we're hoping to only have two blocks at a time closed off to traffic. We've got, we're gonna have traffic control set up for permanent truck route, detours until the project is complete, and we're hoping that we can get in and out as quick as possible. We're gonna have to try and do some finagling with some of the businesses down through there, just to make sure that we aren't, you know, inconveniencing them too much. We really wanna make sure that we're in and out and not in the way too much. So, I mean, it's unfortunately where everything is gonna be, we have to do full closures. We were hoping to do lane closures, but it's just not gonna work that way with those intersections, because we have to.
That's kinda what I was wondering about.
Go full north and south.
You can't really just close out the inside lanes, because you have to go out.
Yeah. If we were just doing the main and not the intersections, we could do that, because our main on the west end of town, west of West Street, is actually on, kind of, it hugs the north side of the road. And then when you get to the other side of West Street, or actually, then it kinda drops to the south side of the road, and it stays, you know, like that both ways. So, you know, if we didn't have to do the intersections, we would just do lane closures. But unfortunately, yeah, we gotta, we gotta make those crossings, so we're gonna have to close it down.
CDOT's got a good public relations firm that they're working with, so we'll work hard with them and really do the best we can to get the notices out and let folks know. But it's gonna be a pretty major impact to the traveling public down 34, so.
Yes, unfortunately.
We'll do the best we can, and working with the businesses. Appreciate Eric, and they'll visit each of them, and we'll do the best we can there, but it.
Well, the thing I'm impressed with, Eric, is that you're already anticipating public relations with it and stuff like that. And I think that, you know, for us being city employees, that you've really got the right attitude as far as trying to pay attention to the citizens and what their needs would be, and what you can do to try and attenuate the impact as much as possible. So I commend you for that.
Thank you. Yeah, we understand. It is a huge inconvenience for travel, so, yeah.
But it is nice. We're touching it once, right? We're gonna fix our infrastructure. CDOT's gonna pave the road, and it should last for a long time.
Yes.
How far back are those roads that have the piece cut out of it where you had to go do it and then resurface it?
Well, I'm sorry, what?
I'd love doing it beforehand, so that you don't end up with the little part cut out, but then we have to resurface, yeah.
How far back are you? Are laterals gonna go to the secondary street?
On most of them, we're just gonna get out of the paving area. There are a couple of them. I know Aurora, we have to replace a fire hydrant there as well, and so we're gonna take it up to where the fire hydrant connects, the existing fire hydrant is, so then we can make that replacement. And then there's a couple of valves we need to install. So those, we'll take it probably, at the most on those, I would say maybe 20, 30 feet into the roadway, the side street road.
I had some concerns, and I've whispered them with Steve earlier this week about Mr. Neve being overtaxed with both the Twaymore completion and then this task. And Steve has assured me that these won't conflict, and so I just wanted on the record that there were some concerns there. But it sounds like Twaymore won't start back up until April for the connections on that.
Yeah, that's, I appreciate that, John. The work at Twaymore, for the most part, is complete, except for work that requires asphalt and concrete. And of course, all of that won't start back up until, you know, the asphalt batch plant opens up and the warmer weather. So I think this is perfect timing for Darren to be able to leave that project, come and take care of this one for a month, and then he'll be able to turn right around and start back over there at Twaymore and wrap that project up for the summer, so.
Are you still all working on those, a little ways down the alley, you know, the?
Oh, the alley approaches?
Uh huh.
Yeah. Yeah, they usually.
Are they, are they all done?
No. No, we're going through, just trying to replace manholes, get them re-lined, whatever work needs to be done on the manhole prior to it. And then the street department, we give them the list of what we've gotten completed, and then they, they come in and they get those approaches done as the budget allows each year, so.
I was wondering if they were done or not.
It's, it's looking really nice. I mean, they've gotten quite a few of them done, so we're pretty happy with it. Makes it a lot easier for us to access our manholes, and it keeps the alleys a little bit cleaner, too.
Any other questions for Eric?
Good job.
Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution to accept the bid from Darren Neve Excavating to complete the 2021 West Platte Avenue Water Projects A and B in an amount not to exceed $558,108.75 with the inclusion of the addendum number one cost in case.
Second. Have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Doug Satchow. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you very much.
Next is a presentation on approval of the sole source expenditure for body-worn cameras for the police department. Amanda Brown.
Good evening. As you know, I'm Steve Brown, support service commander for the Fort Morgan PD. This is Lance Martin, works for WatchGuard Motorola, and is the representative in Colorado. Not gonna try to be as long-winded as Eric, but I probably will be. So I'm gonna give you a little bit of a back history on our body camera system, and then get into the nuts and bolts of it. So the Fort Morgan Police Department is currently in need of upgrading its body-worn camera system. Our current system was originally purchased in 2014. Twenty-two cameras were purchased that year with an additional six in 2015 and an eight-bay docking station. Total cost to purchase the system was approximately $12,298. The issue for this current camera system is now completely outdated and continues to fail our officers during their shifts. The company that we purchased these cameras from no longer manufacture this type of camera, therefore it costs us approximately $150 every time we have to send a camera in or more if there's a bigger issue. The other issue is our ability to store the data, video from the cameras. And based on the new legislation and what we are required to keep, the department continually faces the issues of storage capacity. With the passing of Senate Bill 217, that will be effective July 1st, 2023, agencies must provide body-worn cameras to their officers and will need to be able to activate them when responding to a call or any officer-initiated contact with the public. If that officer fails to activate the body-worn camera, they face potential suspension of their certification. It is imperative that we provide our officers with equipment that is reliable to protect not only them, but the citizens as well. Since the purchase of our current camera system, the technology for body-worn cameras has grown exponentially, while ours continues to deteriorate. The capability of these newer systems range from the camera turning on as soon as the lights and sirens are turned on to notifying of other officers if one of the officers are down. Most have Wi-Fi and GPS capabilities and pre-event recording. The possibilities seem endless for options, as well as an increase in the price tag for these systems. Based on that, the department created a body-worn camera committee consisting of patrol officers and detectives. This committee evaluated body-worn camera systems from four different companies. These companies were WatchGuard, Bright, ProVision, and Utility. After all the demonstrations were complete, the committee got together to determine which camera system would work the best for the department. They chose WatchGuard V300 based on their proprietary software in the camera that no other company could offer. This feature is called Record After The Fact, which is similar to pre-event recording but goes back further, and will allow an officer or the department to create a video through the record button, though the record button was never pressed. An example of this is if an officer is doing a routine business check or walking down the street and runs across a citizen and doesn't turn their camera on, and then later on, that individual comes back and files a complaint against that officer, we would have the capability of going back into that camera system and finding that contact and determining whether or not that could be substantiated. The reason that this Record After The Fact is such an important feature is that it has 128 gigabit storage, which is on a constant loop. So it's always there and basically never runs out of memory or storage capabilities. The technology also relates back to Senate Bill 217, where in the event of an allegation of misconduct is brought against an officer, the department would have at least 21 days to release that information unedited. Again, this allows us to go back and be able to do that. Another issue that our officers run into with our current body camera system is battery life. As we all know, as the batteries get used and charged up and then used again, they start losing their life. Currently, there are cameras in our inventory that do not make it an hour into the shift before the battery dies. The V300 allows officers to change the battery out at any time and put a new charge to the battery in the camera. Again, no other company was able to provide that option for us. What the department is wanting to do is get into a contract with WatchGuard, which is referred to as a service, where the department would receive 24 V300 body-worn cameras, a 10-bay USB docking station, and an 8-bay transfer station. As a package, it will come with the cameras, evidence management software that will cost roughly $69 per month. This package will give us unlimited storage and cloud sharing and access to evidencelibrary.com for records management and redaction capabilities. Currently, we do not have redaction capabilities, so if someone makes a request for a video, we just have to give them the raw video and have no way of taking things out of it. The agreement also would give us a 24/7 support and what is called a third-year technology refresh. So in the third year, they would refresh our cameras. And one of the most important features is the unlimited cloud storage, which we figure would be the biggest expense regarding video storage. We compared this to another company that we looked at, and their price for cloud storage was $79 a month at 250 gigabytes per camera. But this also did not include redaction, which also, which would cost us another $195 a month per license. The agreement we like to enter into WatchGuard V300 as a service total is 1,00, excuse me, 108,660. We would pay an initial payment of $22,932 this year and then budget $21,432 for the next four years. Again, this contract would include the cameras, unlimited cloud storage and sharing, third-year technology refresh, 24/7 support, replaceable batteries, 8-bay transfer case, and Record After The Fact option. The funding source for this purchase would be from the account $21,000 from the 2021 budget. We recommend and we ask that the council approve us going into a sole-source contract with WatchGuard.
I thought you were gonna be as long as Eric.
What's that? I can go on. I brought Senate Bill 217, if you want me to read it.
No, I start reading a little bit of that.
Next time. You got it.
Does anybody have any questions for Commander Brown?
Good description for a non-techy.
Excuse me?
I said you did a good job for a non-techy.
Thank you.
I followed pretty, pretty well.
That's why I brought him. If you had any technical questions, he would be able to answer them.
Is that right?
I'm sorry?
Is that Mr. Warren?
Lance Martin.
Who's Motorola? Your name?
Lance Martin.
Oh, okay. I was looking at this one. It says Matthew Warren, that's what.
He's, yeah.
Okay, thank you. How current is this model that we're looking at? How long has it been out? Are we gonna be outdated within a year, even though you support it?
It's just coming out. It's just coming out right now.
Thank you. So I didn't need to talk to Motorola. Sorry. You knew.
I knew. You don't have to call Motorola.
And John, the other, the other thing about that, as Steve said, in three years, they will replace those cameras. So technology changes so fast. In three years, we will have new cameras as part of this agreement.
Thank you.
That's included as a part of the cost, or bang, now. I see any questions? Any other questions for Brown?
Sounds good that you would have a tech support all the time, too.
Yes. Safety vision doesn't, isn't really helpful for our cameras right now, because they don't make them anymore, so they really don't care.
And one other thing to keep in mind, we would like to go back to in-car cameras to supplement this as we move forward. I think that's important that we do it also. And their product, they can also sell, which will integrate with the body-worn camera and the in-car camera. So when you turn on the lights of the car, it will also turn on the body camera or vice versa. So I think there's a lot of compatibility that will help us in the future as we move forward with that as well.
Can't you save some money and just put your new, your current cameras, mount them on the dash?
They'd be good for about 30 minutes. Get you out of the parking lot at least.
Okay. And now you went too deep for me. So you have a, how does that interact with the camera in the car? And the, and the, and then you'll have them on the body and in the car?
That's correct. So WatchGuard also provides an in-car camera system. And when the lights are activated or some type of mechanism is activated, it'll not only integrate with car system but, and the body camera. So you'll have a couple of different cameras going at the same time on, on any one call.
So they, but they're two different shots of things?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
One would be coming from the vehicle and one would be coming from the body camera.
Okay. That sounds good.
Yep.
Sounds good.
I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution that we allow a sole source purchase of 24 V300 body worn cameras with accessories.
Second?
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Brian Erdialis. Both by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next is a presentation on bids for an airport shop hangar door, Mr. Nation.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Let's see, let me get the right folder open. Uh, what we have tonight is a new door out of the hangar we own out at the airport. This is for the main hangar building that's used by our FBO. The large door in the front of it is 16 feet by 60 feet in length. It's starting to suffer significance, fatigue in the metal. They've been welding it back together and repairing it in places and it's at a point where it's just gonna fall apart the next time it breaks. So we had money put in the budget and I went out to bid. Uh, you see in front of you, we got one acceptable bid back. Pretty sure this is the guy that's been working on it for us. So kinda knew what he was getting into. So has everything that we need to, to get the, get a good door on there, replace the ones there. So looking for permission to accept the bid from Power Lifts. Yeah, I flipped the wrong memo. There we go. Uh, from Power Lift Doors of Colorado in the amount not to exceed $38,312.
I know that they're concerned with that door coming down to one of their million dollar airplanes.
Yeah.
Half a million dollar airplane.
Yep.
Well, staff running it and now it is in pretty rough shape. Kind of housekeeping for some of our properties.
Yep.
I would entertain a resolution unless anybody has any questions.
Your Honor, I make a resolution to approve the purchase from Power Lift Doors for one door. Not, um, not to exceed $38,312 for the airport.
Second?
I have a resolution by John Caper, a second by Doug Satchow. Both by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thanks Brent.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing to consider an application for a final plat for a major subdivision for Phase One of the Point Village Commercial Park. This is a public hearing. Please keep public comments to the issues before council. Each speaker is asked to limit the comments time to three minutes unless a speaker represents a group of citizens. In which event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony and questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues and set a time limit on the duration of testimony if I determine it necessary in light of the number of persons who have signed up to testify. First is the issue of legal notice. Minister Brennan, was this properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on January 14th.
Next is presentation of the application, Mr. Nation.
I will make this quick in light of the number of people here tonight. This is about how busy the planning commission meeting on this topic was too. So um, what you have in front of you, the last time I came in with one of these, it was for the apartment project over in Center Point. Where we brought in the entire plat and wanted to go ahead and walk it through the final plat process and make that entire subdivision then sellable. In this one, this is the area that would be northeast of the apartments, just due north of the fieldhouse. We brought in a preliminary plat to you that showed the 39 total lots that we want to build in there. Uh, we've done the engineering to build out, look at building out the utilities to those 39 lots. But we've had some interest in some of those outline lots. And so you can't technically do a final plat unless you have all the infrastructure. And so we didn't do, wanna, wanna do a final plat that included the interior lots until we have a discussion about putting that type of money into a capital budget at some point. And so, but we felt we could go ahead and, and do a Phase One of the Point Village Commercial Park and go ahead and have those exterior lots available to sell. If we do have people that are indeed interested in moving on those. So, and we, we had, it sounds like we have had some interest through Sarah's office on at least one of those lots. So so we went ahead and, and proceeded to take Phase One of Point Village through that final plat process. And like before, this just goes ahead and just finishes off all the paperwork that's needed. In this case, it's, we're not dealing with an outside developer. We are the developer. And so we've made sure that everything's done and in there. Uh, if you read through the memo, you'll see all the different things that have been done as part of this process and all those things are in there. That's the, it's gonna end up being an L shape of the lots that we're producing when it's said and done. But, um, everything's ready to go. And so we took it to planning commission, planning commission, sent along with their approval. We have not had anybody call my office, write my office, you know, email. Uh, we didn't have anybody show up to the planning commission to voice concern or, you know, in favor of it. It's been kind of a quiet subject on this one. So, um, so with that, we're bringing it forward. Basically, it's, looks like it's in complete compliance with our zoning district standards, our subdivision standards. We're looking to complete its movement through the major subdivision process into the final plat. And so with that, um, we're looking for, um, from you guys, the final plat has been reviewed by the city staff and found to be in compliance with the major subdivision requirements. City staff recommends approval of case 20-009 SD, Point Village Commercial Park Subdivision Phase One Final Plat for a major subdivision to be divided into a parcel. The first 14 lots creating rights of way and various easements. And this was recommended by the planning commission. Happy to answer any questions?
When I've heard on Lake City, the lots on River Street, those are the first guys that have the park.
Yeah.
Is this the, the ones you did something with before? We looked at all of the size of the lots. Is that the same piece of property? What do we, what do we do?
These are all, these are all half acre lots that are in there. Every single one of them are laid out in half acre chunks. And so we're hoping as we get the whole thing developed that somebody, if they want an acre, they can just buy an acre from us and we'll replat it to an acre for them. So kinda uniform, but.
But that's that same piece of ground that we were working with before?
Yeah, I think so. And I, it's, it's that northeast corner of Center Point and that's 39 half acre lots. But as Brent mentioned, as we move forward through the process, if somebody's looking for larger sections, we can combine those lots pretty easily in our code. So.
Sounds good.
Any other questions for Mr. Nation? Thank you Brent.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear comments from the applicant, which is us. So I don't think we have any.
Nothing further.
Nothing further. Okay. Public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to speak to this issue?
There is one attendee in the Zoom meeting. If that person would like to make a comment, please put a note in the chat box or raise your hand. Seeing none.
None. I would ask the city clerk if you received any written or oral comments through your offer prior to this meeting?
No, Your Honor.
Counsel discussion. Anybody in counsel have comments or questions regarding this? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion by Kevin Lindell and a second by Clint Anderson. All in favor? I oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Counsel action, Mr. Wilson.
Mayor and counsel, you've heard presentation of the application. Proper action is by resolution on the final major subdivision.
I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution approving case 20-009 SD, Point Village Commerce Park Subdivision Phase One Final Plat for a major subdivision to divide the parcel into the first 14 lots creating rights of way and various easements.
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Brian Erdialis. Both by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is reports by officials and staff.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Just a few things quickly. I know you have another agenda item here in executive session. So I'll be brief. We gave you tonight in your envelope, a little poll, if you will, for the council retreat. We're trying to set that in March. So if you would please, before you leave tonight, if you could just fill that out, there's a couple of dates listed there that we're looking at a Saturday. And Kevin's saying there's no way he's coming on a Saturday. Well, you know, we tried. But if you could let me know which of those dates or both dates will work for you, that would be great. And I think we've got a great agenda coming. It will be kind of a full day, but I think a lot of good business to be done at that meeting. So appreciate in advance your attendance, Kevin.
I'm, I'm a really busy man.
Right, I know. I walk by your house every day. Also tonight, we were able to provide you with a printed copy of the budget, a nice budget book. This has the elements that we talked about at the budget retreat in October. Some of the fund balance sheets that you've seen, some graphs and charts and things of the budget. But really appreciate Jeanie and her team for all the work they did. Also Dana Jorgensen, who many of you maybe have not met, but my new admin assistant did a lot of work putting the books together. And so you have those. And if you have questions or as you're looking through that, please don't hesitate to ask. A few updates on some projects quickly. Fieldhouse is moving along well. Had the opportunity to take the Fort Morgan Times over there yesterday. Uh, I think you'll see a story on that in the morning. There was an, an error in the, in the article. They, they had it opening in March. Please don't come in March. It won't be open at the end of March. It would be open at the end of May, which is what we've always anticipated. But they're certainly on schedule and things are looking great over there. A lot of painting going on, a lot of interior work. So if you'd like to take a quick tour, let me know. I'll get you over there. It's really looking, uh, it's coming to the finishing touches of that project. So uh, over there as well, the apartments, the first apartment building has received its certificate of occupancy. And I believe there, they already have renters inside a few of those units. So we're pretty excited to know that folks have rented those and moving in and they're already working on the second one. Uh, I think those are gonna go quick. Sarah and I had the opportunity to go over there and tour one of the two bedroom units. They are really, really nice. So hopefully folks, if you're listening and paying attention tonight on the YouTube channel, uh, they're looking for renters. So if you're looking for a place to rent, uh, these are really nice apartments. There's a sign out front. You can get the phone number and contact the management company. But, uh, uh, look for more apartments to be available soon. But really excited to see those finished and people moving in. So. And the Kiowa Eye Care Center also at the corner of Saunders and Platt Avenue is coming along well. They were, looked like they were putting shingles on today. So a lot of work being done. That's a unique building. If you haven't driven by there and taken a look at that, it's got a cool roof line and, and a lot of roof pitches and really architecturally attractive building. So I think their projected date is midsummer to open that building. So they're working hard and hopefully a lot of good things happening in Center Point. So pretty excited about that. Unless you have questions, I would offer the opportunity for Sarah to come up. I think she's got a quick report on a few things and maybe some sad news for us. Sarah, are you back there?
Yeah. So, um, I just have a couple of updates. We are still accepting applications for the Small Business Relief Grant up until this Friday. We went ahead and started advertising that we will allow businesses that are a mile outside of city limits to apply as well. So we've reached out to those businesses that qualify and we've already gotten some applications in from them. So it'll be really great to not only help our businesses here, but also those outside of city limits. So if you have any questions about that grant program or any businesses have questions, just have them reach out to me. Applications are due this Friday. And with that, I'm sure as most of you are aware, I have taken a position with another municipality here in Colorado. But I did wanna thank all of you for the opportunity to work for this community. I have learned so much. Um, and I'm thankful for you guys trusting me and letting me do my job and bring some different types of ideas here. And I'm really proud of the work that we've all been able to accomplish. All the directors here, they're amazing to work with. You have such staff that's super dedicated to the city and understands long-term the vision of what Fort Morgan can be. And so it's so great to be able to say that I was a part of that. And I have to thank Steve. He's a great boss. There's so much that I continue to learn from him every day. I always say, I always tell him that he's like my mentor. He really teaches me so much. And Fort Morgan is extremely, extremely lucky to have a city manager like that here. It doesn't happen very often. So thank you, Steve, for everything that you've done. I really, really appreciate it. I thank all of you guys. Um, my last day here will be February 10th. So up until then, it is business as usual. But we are working internally to make sure that it's a smooth transition and that our projects continue to move forward. So. But yeah, once again, just thank you for everything.
You wanna stick around and do March Business of the Month?
Yeah. Steve's giving me a lot of work to do. So I keep telling him I, I may have to stick around a little longer. Keep pushing my date.
That, that was my plan. I'm just trying to inundate her so she can't leave on the 10th, you know?
Yeah, literally.
She didn't say what year.
Right.
You know?
That's true. She didn't. February 10th, 2045 worked for me.
And it's, it's on the record now. So we're good.
No, guys, this is a tremendous loss. Sarah has been fantastic. I, she's taught me more about economic development than I could ever teach her about city government. This is a huge loss. Johnstown is where she's headed and they, they have really scored big. And so, you know, we're, we're excited for Sarah and for the opportunity that she has. I will tell you, I did everything I could to keep her. I threw everything but the kitchen sink at it and maybe even that. But I can't blame her for the opportunity she has in Johnstown. It's a great growing community. A lot of great things happening there. Matt's building a great team over there, Matt LaServe. And, uh, you know, I'm excited for him and for, and for the town. Uh, they're gonna do great things. We'll, we'll find somebody. We, we've started the advertisement process today that actually hit the Facebook page. So we are currently looking for an economic development specialist. It's open until filled. So we'll look hard to find the right person. And in the meantime, I appreciate John. I've dumped a ton of work on his plate. He's basically picking up all of the pieces when Sarah leaves and he'll be handling all of those things and until we can get somebody hired. You know, I'll help him as much as I can, but certainly a lot of that, the lion's share of the work's gonna dump in his lap. So. so appreciate John and his willingness to jump in and do that. But Sarah, you're gonna be missed, for sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sarah, I want to thank you for this CLG. I wanted that for a long time. You did a great job. It was really professionally done. Did it fast, there was a lot of, of parts to it, and you worked with the board great, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thanks for everything you've done. You, it's been a pleasure watching you blossom from when you started to where you are now. You've done a lot for the city, and I think very much appreciated. Wish you the best in your future endeavors. If you ever need anything, you can always call back on us, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that a lot.
And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you. Yeah.
Bids, meetings and announcements, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city's accepting sealed bids for the HVAC and control system replacement project at the police department until 3:00 PM on February 3rd. Purchase of hydrants, water valves and pipe until 3:00 PM on February 11th. Bids for the East Beaver Avenue Extension Construction Project on 3, until 3:00 PM on February 12th. Purchase of furniture for the fieldhouse until 3:00 PM on February 12th. And purchase of a 750 KVA pad mount and transformer until 3:00 PM on February 18th. No meetings scheduled until, between now and February 15th, which is President's Day and city offices will all be closed. And the next city council regular meeting is February 16th at 6:00 PM here at City Hall.
Next item on our agenda is an executive session for discussion of a personnel matter under CRS Section 24-6-402-4F and not involving any specific employee, employees who have requested a discussion of a matter in open session, any member of this body or any elected official. The appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or of an elected official or personal policies that do not require the discussion of the matters personnel, personal to particular employees. The following additional details are provided for identification. Discussion of goals with our police chief. With that, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session. So moved. I have a motion by Kevin Lindell, a second by Clint Anderson. All in favor? I oppose, same sign. We will remove ourselves to executive session.